To improve academic achievement. And we look up the Sback scores and we compare Sback scores from this year to the prior year. We also compare attendance for all-day attendance of students with regular attendees from this year till last year. Typically, we're always shown that they attend more. They attend more when they are participating in the after-school programs.
Not surprised.
Right. But I do have spreadsheets that show the difference of this year till last year. And typically, it does show that there's improvement for those kids who are regular attending.
Any other questions?
Well, the only thing is we're just looking for is your letting us know that we want to continue with the program so we will be pursuing the grant for 2019 through 2024. Twenty, yeah, 2024.
Yeah, Carol's been going to the various school, local school boards, and people have been making a motion, general coordinators committing particular amounts in their local budgets, just a continued supportive after-school program so that it really gives her the backing to go ahead and apply for these grants.
Dennis, I make that motion.
And I'll second that. Thank you, Richard.
However, the motion is written.
That's right. Motion by Richard, seconded by Father Robb. I believe it's going to be something that affects us of support for the after-school program in the future. So is there any discussion on that? Hearing none? All favor in motion, signify with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have. This should have our support.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Great presentation.
Next, I'm going to pull up Jen's presentation.
Okay. You got them here special?
Yeah.
So now we have Deb Sager, and we're going to be discussing last year's Sback results.
All right. So I am going to share with you information about the testing that students participated in in grade seven, eight, and nine in the springtime. And I'll show you the results over. I've got graphs that show patterns over time as well. So when the Agency of Education looks at school progress, they're looking at two accountability measures now, and this is new. One is they're looking at the percentage of students who are proficient. And that on the Sback is a score of three or higher. And the other thing that they're looking at, and this is the new part, is they're looking at growth. So what they have done is they have given us our average student score. It's called a scaled score. And they're looking for an increase of 10 points or more in that average scale score to show that students are improving in general. And they monitor this by grade level. So it's not one group of students compared to their results the following year. It's just grade seven compared to grade seven compared to grade seven. So beginning with grade seven, these are our seventh-grade math results. We saw a significant increase in our seventh-grade math scores this year, and the state stayed steady, and we improved. So we're pleased to see that amount of growth for grade-seven math. The English scores for language arts are at the same percentage of students proficient as the previous year. But in the following slide, I have information about that average scaled score growth. So even though the percentage of students proficient stayed the same in literacy from last year, or excuse me, from 1617 to 1718, the average scale score increased by over 30 points, which means, basically, what it means is that even though not more students were proficient, students' scores increased in general. So we can look at that data and think about it in terms of students who are scoring a one, improving their skills, and maybe scoring a two, or making growth in general, which means that the supports that we're providing students, like reading intervention, are making a difference, even though it's not increasing the number of students who are proficient, which is good news. You can see that the math scaled scores also increased more than that 10 points. That was the target from the AOE.
Do they give us a target? Okay.
Yep. So they're looking at 10 points or more increased in the average scale score from year to year.
Okay. Thank you.
So these are the eighth-grade math scores. I really like this graph because it shows continued steady growth from year to year in the eighth-grade math scores. So we're definitely moving continuously in the right direction in eighth-grade math. The English scores, the literacy scores went up significantly. And this was the first year that we didn't see a drop from their seventh-grade scores to their eighth-grade scores. It's basically the same.
Jen, there's a question. Are we following like one class? Is that the same class, 215? Now they've become eighth graders are these, the eighth graders of 2015, eighth graders of 2016?
The second one, eighth graders in each of those years. I have the data about groups of children, which I'll show later on. But this is just eighth graders in 2015, eighth graders in 2016, and so on and so forth. But I do have the data that shows one group over time.
Okay. Thank you.
So again, this is the scale score growth. We did not see as much growth in the math scores in terms of scale score, but we did have significant growth in the number of students proficient. But in English, we again have a significant increase in average scale score. So last year was the first test, that first year that the test was given in grade nine. This is the math results. We're not as high as we'd like them to be, but we have more information moving forward. Last year, the preparation materials were not available ahead of the test. So there weren't practice tests available for grade nine, nor were there any of the items that we used to help students be ready for the test.
But that would be statewide?
That was statewide, yes. It was true.
No other school had that advantage?
No.
So it was a fair competition?
Yep. These are our literacy scores for grade nine, and we are very pleased. This is the first time I can remember in recent memory where we've had on-state target scores.
This is ninth grade.
That's the ninth grade. So we do monitor the cohort trends, which is what Greg was talking about, one particular group of students over time. It's not something that the state monitors, but we think it's important. So we wanted to share that with you as well. So this is the class of 2023. These are our current eighth graders. And we can see that their literacy scores are relatively stable, which means they're showing a year's worth of growth. And their math scores have increased over time.
Let me ask a question. This is going to be, this is ignorance showing here, okay? So I know that this particular testing is still fairly new, and so that explains a lot. And I'm really proud of our progress. I think it's looking wonderful. I'm concerned that Vermont overall doesn't look too hot to me. You know what I'm saying?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. So, you know, I'd love to drill down into that sometime. We don't have to do it now, but I'm just saying in general, you know, what's going on? That we're, you know, like for instance, over here, we're 57% for the state and 42%. So, you know, talk to me about that later.
Again, this is the first year that we didn't see a significant drop from grade seven to eight. Usually, we see a bit of a dip. And the next slide is the, these are our current 10th-grade students. And so we did see a significant dip in mathematics, but they rebounded tremendously in literacy. So some of the things that we really purposefully did last year that we think made a difference, and there were lots of different things that we did, and I don't know that we can pinpoint specific things out of this list that made the biggest difference, but we're, we know that we targeted a number of different things. We made sure to go into classrooms. Dan went into middle school classrooms. I went into grade-nine classrooms. And we talked about the test and its importance, not just for them as individuals. We tried to talk about its relevance for them as individual students, you know, here's a piece of data that's connected to your name. You want it to represent you accurately. And we talked about its importance for us as a school. We tracked their habits of work during the test. So we have school-wide habits of work around persistence, being responsible for your learning, and being responsible citizens. So we tracked those three things during testing to make sure that they were trying hard and they were maintaining a positive testing environment for their peers. The middle school and grade nine, they had coordinated field trips or other field day-type incentives to encourage students to try their hardest. We made a lot of adjustments to our intervention program last year. Specifically, we did a lot of pre-teaching around literacy skills, and we extended it to summer school, some pre-teaching for the next year as well in literacy and math. One of the biggest changes that our English department has embraced is independent reading, which allows for a lot of student choice. And we've increased the amount of reading time within the school day. And one of the greatest ways to increase a student's reading ability is to read more. And so we've really put an emphasis on increasing the amount of reading time during the day and also giving them access to books that they're interested in. So we invested resources in building classroom libraries that we curate to reflect specific skills that we want to teach with students. So they have choice, but it's not unlimited choice. It's within the literacy skills that we're trying to cultivate. We really focused on maintaining a positive testing environment throughout the course of the testing period, which extends from early March through the end of the school year. So there's, we don't do all the testing that whole time, but it's not, you know, one day or two days like it could have been before. We have access to student data from their past tests, and we shared that with them so that they knew where their performance was. And there are some really nice visuals that show students how close they might be. So for a lot of kids, they could see the bar graph that would show them, oh, I got a two, but I'm really close to getting a three, maybe a little bit more focus, or might be able to help me get to that point. And then something that we did last year for grade nine is we presented certificates of recognition for students who were proficient or exceeded proficiency, not so much so they could put them on their refrigerators, but so that they could scan them and upload them into whatever college applications they were going to have in the future. Because as Julie said, it's a rigorous test. If you got a three or a four, you should be talking about that and sharing that. So some of the things we're doing this year, in addition to the things that we did last year, we have purchased something called universal screening tools in literacy and math. And these are testing, short testing tools that give us specific information about student skills and where they might need support and where they have strengths. And that we are administering to all students in grade seven, eight, and nine. And classroom teachers are using that data to plan better, and our interventionists are using that data to target specific skills and specific groups of students. The Sback provides something called interim assessment blocks, which are practice tests, and they provide a great deal of data. And we have access to the data in the portal. And so we have a plan to administer those throughout the course of the year. We have access to them now. We're not going to wait until February to administer them because then we can see where students are performing. We have new algebra resources materials. One of the struggles that we had last year is that we were working from a variety of math resource materials in grade nine, and we had newer teachers. And so that was something that was a challenge. They were pulling from multiple resources without necessarily a lot of experience. And so we have new resources, and those resources integrate the different disciplines of math so that they're getting exposure to all the things that are on the test. One of the things that we noticed last year was that students who had accelerated into geometry in grade nine, their algebra skills were a little rusty. So most of the test is algebra. This year, we're being really intentional about making sure that the geometry curriculum is supplemented with plenty of algebra and that we're preparing those students appropriately. Dan and his middle school have really revamped their intervention model to be more responsive and flexible. So they are targeting specific skills. They're using the universal screener data and student data from the classroom to create groups of students for shorter-term interventions to support kids and then changing what the skills are as the needs change. We have better data tracking this year, which is fabulous. And we, all year long, are, just like last year, continuing to work on improving our school pride and how kids feel about coming down to you. So one of the things that I talked about with the faculty when I shared the data with them a few weeks ago is how we reframe the narrative and how we take the data and not just explain the growth that we've seen, but really take pride in the fact that we've made some improvements. There's still lots of work to do, but MBU is a great place to go to school, and we're doing the right work, and we're starting to see the difference. So we, we're optimistic. We're feeling, we're feeling okay right now, which is good. Questions?
You did a great job explaining it. No questions?
Has anybody thought to go over to New York and see how they worked to improve scores? Because they've been teaching to the test for years, the Regents. And rather than trying to reinvent the wheel, maybe a trip over there to see some of the better-performing schools and what they've done to bring their overall testing scores up?
I'm from New York, as is Jay. And so essentially, what happens, and I, I went to Camden High School, and, which was a pretty good performing school. And essentially, even though the test would be at the end of the year in June, a lot of times, instruction would stop in April or May, and you would learn to take the test. And so oftentimes, there was a book, and everything was put away. I remember a history class where we went up to World War II. So we never studied anything beyond World War II. That's as far as we got in the curriculum. But then we learned to take the U.S. History Regents Test. And that's what happened a lot. You learned to take the test.
It's teaching to the test.
You talked to the test. So you forgot the rest of the curriculum. So never got to U.S. History beyond World War II, but, you know, you would learn how to take that test.
But they look great on paper.
But I don't think that's.
That's really interesting.
Yep.
I don't think that's uncommon, though.
No. And if the school buys you, back then, it was a $10 book. It was nothing but the old Regents Test.
But of course, like history that expands every year, it seems to have a gait of the end of World War II, and that's, that's the end of history.
It's why we got that year. And that's, you know, that was not uncommon, whether it was chemistry, whether it was physics, whether it was algebra. I mean, you just learn, you learn at that spot, and then you learn to take that Regents Test.
It's not necessary to go over there if you've got two experts.
I don't know. It might have been a little while ago.
Well, I will also tell you that there was, there was a tremendous incentive by the State of New York at that time, too, because if you earned a Regents diploma and bypassing a certain number of the state Regents that you took, I took 18 when I was in high school over in the Thousand Islands, and it was a very small monetary amount. But at that time, we were able to receive up to $800 a year toward our college expenses from New York State.
Wow. I think if you went to school in New York.
If you went to school in New York, yes. Way back when I was involved in education, I wasn't this, when I was teaching, we used to scoff at, at New York, you know, teaching to the test and all that, and it was a waste of time. But we've come around to it. We're doing the same thing now that we used to laugh at before.
I guess it's debatable if that's good or not.
It's what?
It's debatable if that's good or not.
Well, I didn't judge.
Well, one thing that I think, when Jen talks about those interim assessment blocks, well, that's a way of getting students ready for the test, but it's driving the instruction in the classroom at the same time. So it's getting kids familiar with the assessment and the kind of depth of problems they have to solve, because there's no multiple choice, really. I mean, there may be some. But there are a lot of more complex problems that kids need to solve, and being able to have examples and practice as part of the curriculum through the year really helps kids do that kind of problem solving, but also get used to how to do it on the computer, which is also important.
Something that we've noticed is even though our students with the Chromebooks and just as technology has changed over time, even though we've increased the amount of reading that students do on the computer, the amount of text that they are asked to read on the Sback on a computer screen is, it's a huge amount of text. Sometimes, they're reading two or three different articles, multiple pages, and comparing them. And so just that level of persistence when reading on a screen, and I know I read differently on a screen than I do on paper, it's just, it's a whole different set of skills.
I was just going to ask, has any study been done on, on the effectiveness of reading off a screen? You know, I know I can't read off a screen. My eyes go crazy. And I'm not sure if these kids are brought up with it. Maybe they're a little better at it because they're starting from ground zero to read the screen. But I do so much better reading on paper than I do off a screen. I would find it very difficult to take a test on a screen, on a computer.
And part of it is teaching the kids to use the tools that, you know, highlight text and underline text.
Yeah, but I was wondering about their innate ability to, to read a screen and read a paper.
There are definitely tools that help make it better. And if somebody has a disability that makes it difficult for them, I can, you can get it printed, but it's not, so much of it is interactive that it's actually detrimental, it's, you know, unless it's really necessary. But it is interesting, I think, long term to see that because you're right, some people read better on paper than on the computer.
And some of our kids don't have that advantage of having computer experience at home.
That's true. And I think Dan was making a good point. There are lots of technology tools that are embedded in the test, and we, we work with students to know how to use those. But the intuition to pick up a writing utensil and underline something in what you're reading versus opening your highlighting tool and using it to highlight a section of the passage is, it's just different.
Takes practice.
Yeah.
Takes practice and discipline. I don't know that they have.
Right. Developmentally, yeah.
You know, like, do they want, is that their focus? Probably not. It wouldn't be mine.
A lot of perseverance. Your teaching is just to persevere through challenges and how to overcome those challenges or those barriers as they, as they're doing the test. And so that's what it is. You know, they may do one once a week for a little bit of a block, but the teacher uses that data then to say, okay, I need more work on constructive response. I need more work on, you know, sentence structure, whatever that may be. But they get that, they glean that data from what? What that little block tells them.
Really important part of the narrative, like you were saying, saying reframing that to the public, because that's not information that anybody understands or knows that, oh, as an adult, I couldn't do that. Like, I couldn't persevere through that. It'd be done.
Well, the math is all better.
Right. Asking our kids to do that is a huge thing, I think is, it should be, you know, applauded for having to persevere through that.
I think when this test first came out, some schools had board members and community members take the test and, and just to show how very different it is and how very difficult it is. I think our kids, over the past four years, is it really four years we've been taking it?
They've taken it four times, yeah.
So the kids who have taken it four times, like your ninth graders, are getting better at how to use the tools. And we're seeing students get more and more used to doing it because the first year was definitely a challenge for students, because they may be good at computers, but it's different. It's not necessarily intuitive, the way that it was set up at first. A lot of work on a lot of fronts here at MBU, to just keep moving forward.
Thank you very much. I think we're going to jump back up to the top of the agenda now and go down through the things that we've missed. There were, there was one agenda amendment, I think it was just one, that we had for this evening, and it was an executive session issue.
We have a side letter to discuss about MBU support staff.
Okay. So that will be an executive session. I think that will be our one, right?
That's all that I have.
Other than our changing the times around. So, all right. So the next thing down is adopt the minutes from September 20th. So I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from meeting on September 20th, 2018. Do I have that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Greg. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Vicki. A discussion on the minutes.
I had several corrections.
Okay.
Some of them might not just have been wrong words inserted. Do you want me to, I guess I should, page two?
Yep.
On the presentation, second paragraph?
Yep.
They, Greg Gervais stated that there was, seen great success with programs in community. What that was, what I had said at that time was that the school where I had come from, the community school, had been very successful in bringing the community together and also offering adult education to the community, both in electives and also in academics. And that's what I would like to see us move towards. Yeah, I broke, but I can't even read my own writing here as I, as I made the corrections.
Would you like to give me your notes so I can be sure?
I can do that. I can do that.
Okay.
Later, Julie.
I know what you mean.
And on page four, social-emotional learning.
Yep.
A small quote, a faculty began a train, the trainer model. I'm not sure what that meant.
Well, what she did here is she took the superintendent's newsletter and added some of the content of the newsletter into the minutes, which I'm going to talk to, see, I think that should change, because it wasn't discussed in the meeting.
Okay.
But a train-the-trainer means that instead of hiring people to come in and train our staff all the time, we invest in having some of our staff become trainers, and then they can train our staff every year in particular topics. And this one was social-emotional.
I didn't know if she'd get into a mental loop there, but maybe that should be set off in quotes or something like that, if you're going to keep that phrase in there. Began a.
Yep.
Train-the-trainer model, so you know it's unintentional. Page six. Page six, third, the, the second full paragraph down, also there is a VI. The second line, it says, there were any votes, and she could vote on the MBU's, not should.
Six.
Page six? I went too far.
Suggested Julie be the proxy in the case.
Yep.
And there were any votes, and that, and that she could vote on the MBU's behalf, I think is.
Yep.
Better phrased. And technology update about the fifth line down, accessible from websites instead of forum, just a word, wrong word inserted there. I think that might be it.
Yeah, I was just gonna comment. I figured she probably took snippets of some of the material, but anyway. And just, I mean, it's, it's good information, but I don't think it's necessary, just as some were.
Right, right.
I figured she probably typed all this stuff.
Yes, I felt that for after what I went through tonight.
Pretty in-depth.
Which I think she does a wonderful job of trying to capture everything. I think that that's, I'd rather have that attached. I think I'm gonna try and have, start putting my newsletters on the website somewhere so that people can see them there, to, rather than having to capture all of it. If you would ask questions about one of those topics and we discuss it, that should definitely.
I just have one more that, that, I don't know if it's necessary, you can guess into it, but on the last page, eleven, page eleven, Richard Flynn made the, the motion to enter an executive session, right? Mark Berset seconded, motion passed seven, nothing. Then it goes to the executive session. It should have in there the time we come out of executive session, and it didn't note that.
Sure.
And it's pretty close to our adjournment, so.
Right.
It was, it was, I sent it to you now, it was nine o'clock and then nine o'clock.
Yeah, so we exit executive session. No action was taken, John, only the motion to adjourn.
That's important. Thank you.
Just to note that there wasn't a large gap between coming out of executive session and adjournment. That's it, that's all I have.
If you give me your notes, I'll make sure she has them.
Okay.
If you want.
I might wanna re.
No, it's okay. I took, I took notes from what you said.
Okay.
So I think we'll be fine.
All right. Are there any other comments? Or none? All in favor of the motion to approve minutes of September twentieth with modifications or corrections? Anybody saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Nice habit, motion carries. All right. Back after school, facilities update. I think that brings us up to Paul.
Okay, so the gym's coming along nicely. The floor's been painted. We've got two coats of urethane over the top of the paint. They're installing bleachers right now. Got two tractor trailer loads of hards yesterday and today. And they're actually starting to look like bleachers right now, and stuff's coming along quickly. And then we have the construction manager portion of the lawn project. And so we're gonna be looking at, the bids came back yesterday, Tim and I opened them. There's a tally sheet in your folder here, the second page. And then tonight, the board meeting, we need to have a board designate for the interviews on Friday, if anybody's available. And if not, if no board members are present, that the board meeting needs a board designate, and then we can discuss it, the, how the interview process went with Dennis. And if he's all right with our selection, then we all award a bid on the twenty ninth to the construction manager. There are three construction companies that have been on the process, and they're in your package. And we'll, we'll go from there. So I'm actually gonna be looking for a motion under, is somewhat similar to what's in the twenty-third board meeting.
Yeah.
Self update.
So, most of us were in the finance committee meeting, and there wasn't, there wasn't anybody that was available. I guess Eric is probably the only one that wasn't there. Is that something that you would have any interest in? Be this Friday, noon to probably about four thirty?
No, I'm not available.
Not available, okay. Then.
I can be there for some of it. I can't, I have meetings, but I can be there for the interview section, if you'd like me to, Paul. I think if Paul and, I mean, just to think, as you said, Greg, I don't have any expertise, but if, if Paul and Tim Duff, and we're discussing it, and then Paul and you discuss it over the weekend, if the board authorizes Paul to conduct the interviews, and then you.
I think somebody else need, not just Dennis in this one. I think we need more, one or two people to discuss with Paul over it. This is a big money topic, and I think not just Dennis should be involved here. I think we, we need a couple other board members.
The challenge is gonna be from Friday afternoon to Monday, twenty ninth.
Yeah, Monday's twenty ninth.
So I don't know if we wanna try to get together like on a Monday, Monday early, like six o'clock, or earlier than that, maybe, five o'clock, six o'clock. And.
Even a subcommittee of people.
Right. Two or three people. I agree with you, Richard. It's a, it is a big deal. But I guess I'm thinking that with Paul and Tim Duff and, and Julie being present, I think Dan was gonna be in the interviews as well. So I, I think that.
What time is that on Friday?
Noon.
On noon till about five.
So I, I'm thinking that, are you available?
I think that I might be.
Okay, okay, perfect. And, and I'm not saying I can't do it. I'm just saying that I might not be able.
I gotta put in some personal time, but I'll.
If you're interested, that'd be a good, a good place to be. And if I can make it, I don't think there's anything wrong with having more people.
No, we just can't have a forum.
Right.
Right.
So.
Twelve to.
Interview.
Yeah, it's right on the front of that paper, Richard.
Yep.
So it'd be about twelve to four thirty or so.
So if you feel, if you feel confident that you can make it, then we could designate you. And where we can, I don't know, if, if it's not in a motion as a designate, somebody could still show up, I would imagine, as long as we don't have a forum.
Right.
It doesn't sound like we're gonna have a forum, so.
Because what I was looking for, I was looking to see if there was any board participation into it and stuff.
Yeah.
But if there's not, I could be the ultimate designate.
Right.
If nobody shows up.
Right.
We could authorize the administration to move forward with the awarding of contract. And again, we would wanna consult. Doesn't mean that people wouldn't be consulting with the interview committee.
Right.
And, and with you as well over the weekend.
So, I mean, I don't have a problem if, if I'm appointed as a designate to the board, and, and Richard shows up if he can. And if I can't, it's gonna, it could happen that way. So if we wanna have a motion to appoint, I guess we could appoint one or, one or the other, you or me, or both, suppose we could have both.
Could actually have both.
Okay.
And then, like at the end, probably down as alternate.
Right.
In case somebody doesn't, isn't able to be there.
So the process doesn't stop.
So we could, so the move process.
All right. So I would entertain a motion to appoint myself and Richard Flynn as designees for the board to be present at the interviews for a construction manager on the twenty-sixth.
I'll make that one.
Motion by Eric.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Greg. Any discussion?
Is that gonna include Paul?
Uh, that's right. I was supposed to add that, including.
Well, it could either be me or Dan. Dan's gonna be there also, so either one of us, maybe you could put down both of us as board designees.
Who's more reliable? I'm gonna go with Paul.
That was harsh.
Why not me?
Well, really, that's three of you dead.
Yeah. So, so yeah, we'll, we'll add Paul to that list and in case there are no board members. So, all right. So, any other discussion on that motion?
Well, in the end, after the interview, they're gonna fill out this matrix anyways. And that's theoretically the ultimate, the deciding factor. It's not like the guys are gonna sit and debate about it. So, I mean, I think for, for the most part, whoever's there is just gonna fill out.
I guess I've never done, I've never done one like that, so.
Right. Because like, like John says, the process is pretty organized, once you're going down through and evaluating each one with a numeral value, you'll actually see who your construction manager's gonna be at the end.
Yeah. Yeah, that's interesting. All right, yeah, so should eliminate.
As long as, I mean, if, as long as I think we've got representative, you know, administration and someone from the board filled out the matrix.
Yeah, right.
We just have, you know, a couple different perspectives on the process. You know, because what Paul's gonna be interested, might not be, or who's gonna be interested as far as like their, their evaluation of the person. He might be looking at more like construction details, and we might be more looking at like how long we're gonna manage this.
Organized, yeah.
I'm into the maths.
Right. All right, so, all right, that's a good point.
Hey, Paul, Tim Duff is who, again?
He is our architect with Weeman Land here.
Right.
And do bear in mind, if you're, if you're picking numbers and waiting, everybody thinks a five is different. And so when you get to the end, even if, if it's just slightly higher for somebody and wildly higher for another, it is still higher, you know? So some people think a four is a real good score, other people think that's failing, you know? So just bear that in mind when you're doing that, because I've, I've used this kind of formula many times.
Yeah, yeah.
If you're not doing it as a whole group, in other words, everybody's doing their own.
Doing their own, right.
Each person fills one out, tells them up.
Right, right. Okay. So I think you're right. And that should, if everything, if the process works the way it should, it should be cut and dry. So the motion is still out there to designate myself, Richard, and Paul as designees from the board to those interviews. So are we ready to vote on that?
Can we throw in Dan in there, too?
Yeah.
We can put Dan in there.
Really don't want Dan there?
Dan, he's being harsh tonight.
I see that.
He's getting pizzas tonight.
The pizza was good, too. Feel bad about that. All right, so, so Paul and Dan, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nice habit, motion carries. See you on Friday. You're there.
Oh, all we're, that's fun to be in the high school conference, right?
All right.
So I, I had anything, nothing else, but did anybody else have any questions? Other than, I didn't know if any, if the board would like to see the gym.
I'd love to see it.
To make a short resale.
I was gonna ask you if you wanted to do that.
I would like to see it.
Because I, I tell you, it looks pretty nice.
Did you finish that science classroom?
Well, I don't.
I know you had a hangup. That's why I was like, I wonder if that ever worked out for me.
It is. It turned out really well, except for our tops, they come in. And so I'd rather wait for you when I have the.
Oh, there's, okay, that's fine. I didn't know, because I knew you had the hangup, and I was like, I wonder if that.
Still not the way he wants it.
That's okay, I get it. I appreciate it.
I'd like to get the top some before we go back to.
Thank you.
Well, last, last spring, there was some questions asked, raised about the, I guess, cleanliness of the girls' locker room. Was that addressed over the summer?
Well, we cleaned it over the summer and stuff. One thing that, that we're working on is trying to have more custodial staff. We are still down to people. And so we're working with some student employees and stuff. So we're kinda holding our own, but we could actually use a few more custodians.
So positions for custodians out there.
And so the thing is, what happens is, a lot of times, the locker rooms are used right up till eight, nine o'clock, ten o'clock. Sometimes there's just not enough time to get them cleaned for the evening's hour.
Such a good habit for.
I know.
Bacteria and fungus and that kind of stuff that I think it should be a top priority.
Just that, if we do disinfect them, actually, we're on a program regimen where all the classrooms, all the custodians are using either cloths or disinfectant. They spray everything down, the tabletops, the doors, door handles, so that once they're done with a classroom, they're, they're just disinfecting everything and closing the home up overnight. And we disinfect in the locker rooms also.
Yeah. Locker room should be a priority.
I appreciate the offer for the tour of the gym. I think we're gonna take you up on it, but we're gonna try to finish up the meeting, and then we'll hit it on the way to executive session.
Okay.
So.
So you guys are taking, oh, I was gonna say, this is the key goes in by F1. Okay. Notice we skipped it.
I was gonna, I was gonna read over.
If you reach the ground, you get the jet.
All right, see y'all later.
Thank you, Paul.
Paul, thank you so much.
You and Rodney Dangerfield.
No respect.
No respect.
All right. Financial update. We have Laura with us. So lucky to have Laura with us, I should say. We, I guess we'll start with check warrants, so that's first on the list. I guess I will entertain a motion to approve the check warrant for the date September fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to October twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of two hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-three cents. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Motion by John, the second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Father Rob. Any discussion on the check warrant report?
What was that, combined total again?
Two forty-five, four twelve, and fifty-two cents. And there's only one. Starting last month, there's only one. Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'll stay. I didn't get to see either one. Either half.
One abstention.
You get either one.
Who's second?
You don't get one, I had mine in the email, and then the second one goes to you in the pack.
Comes in the email, but I don't, again, I don't read this.
Okay, so both get mailed to you separately?
Both do.
Okay, all right. I'll, I'll look and see why.
Yeah, yeah, they like one, too. They don't get none. They send this, but don't send no.
Yeah, Richard and I get it.
You haven't been getting.
We get it by mail.
Right, but you haven't been getting the discouragement detail in there?
No.
Okay, we'll fix it, yeah.
Anyway, the ayes have it, motion carries.
On that report, if you put it in a business envelope, it's a lot more reliable. Sometimes these larger envelopes get held up in the mail. For some reason, I got one two day, one day after the meeting, one came in.
I know that the mail has been extremely slow. We don't have, say, our overnight.
On the big envelopes, I don't think it's a big priority.
Okay.
So if they post in a business envelope, it seems to move better through the mail system.
Hey, put Mark on that list, too, so I don't have to make. Hey, put Mark on that list too, so I don't have to make any copies. Please.
Hand me back, I haven't put it back in further. Right, right.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, financial report summary, I don't have a printed one.
Right, so I did not bring you a, a financial report for the current year, we had one last month, now we bring one the following month, there's not, not much that's changed since.
Right.
Um, and you do have in front of you, uh, though, the draft one of the fiscal year twenty budget, which is kinda crazy to f early on. This is definitely a starting point, very preliminary. Basically, I've taken the staff's benefits from the current year, um, and, and used some moderate increases if, if things are unknown or to be negotiated, or, um, if there are increases that have been announced, I'll apply those, um, so I'll just kinda highlight what I've done. Professional staff are to be negotiated, the current master agreement ends this year, um, and so I've used a moderate increase in there. Just maintaining the current seventy-six point eight three FDE, or professional staff under the threshold. Uh, we do know that Blue Cross Blue Shield, uh, health insurance increases are gonna be eleven point eight percent, um, after a ten point one percent increase last year. I don't anticipate that being much different in the near future with these new plans. So, that's, that's quite a hit to your budget. Um, I did wanna highlight on instructional programs on page one, just because Carol LeDaw did come tonight and talk about her wonderful after-school program. Your local share that she was pointing out to you is under the three hundred, under, um, about halfway through the page, it says twenty-one C slash crossroads after school. Um, and we're budgeting about sixty-five thousand dollars, that's your local share she was talking about. Other than that, uh, for union support staff, we know that the, uh, increase is fifty cents on the base, so I've accounted for that. Non-union, I'm using three percent right now purely for discussion purposes at the starting point. That's obviously at the board's discretion. Dental insurance, we are, may have a slight decrease this year, so I think it's just, um, remained level in this draft. All assessments and contracted services, I'm using just a two and a half percent increase right now as a holding, um, uh, place, other than the special ed assessment. The special ed assessment, I've, uh, adjusted to what I, based on actual, right now, for fiscal year nineteen, added a moderate increase, uh, but we do know that those are very fluid. And so, I ask that you please know that that can change significantly from draft to draft, but we'll do our best, I work with Becky on that, as she manages, early childhood program, um, central office, and special ed assessments right now. Um, we have moved a couple of things, um, so I did wanna point that out, um, you'll see in the notes section on page, page three, um, under where we used to have the registrar, um, separate, that's now been consolidated under guidance. Trying to make it a little less identifiable as far as, um, salary benefits for that individual. Benefits in particular, it's only one staff member, it's a, you know, a, a much more micro view probably. If we want that detail, we don't always break it out for you, but having it out to the public that way is, um, so we, in talking with Becky, we thought that might be a better idea. Um, the same thing has happened under the students assistance program, under, uh, on page four. Um, we've moved that into the student management budget, which truly is more appropriate. The function codes that we are required to use, while the state definitely allow for that. And then, lastly, on the very last page, on page nine, under twenty-seven hundred, pupil transportation, that's where you'll notice that, uh, the proposed amount is about, I don't know, forty-seven or forty-eight percent, no, actually, sorry, the other way, fifty-three percent or so, um, of what it, um, the full amount that you'll see through the current year. The revenue that you typically see on your offsetting revenue page, um, is now being net prior to that being assessed to the school. And that's required by the state of Vermont, we got a notice a couple of months ago saying that that would have to happen, so, impact on the bottom line of your budget is a, is a win-win this year, um, but your, um, net ed spending calculation, which is what they use to, uh, project your tax rate, it'll be, basically be a wash, because you'll have less revenue showing on the revenue side, but your expense has gone down the, um, corresponding amount. Not much else at this point, again, very preliminary. We still have department program, but it's come in probably in December, I know Jen, um, has been working with department leaders on those and that process. And I know, um, Paul has yet to develop his facility recommendations as well, and, and the administration is working on staff. Recommendations or changes. We do have a lot of, um, column movements, which is great, um, here at Trax, column movements, where teachers are gaining, and their professional development gaining in their, um, columns, and MBU had a giant list that just came out today, so that was really great, but there will be a little increase cost because of that. That's usually a really great thing, so.
Well, that's a good place to start.
So I did, yeah, so draft one is, um, reflecting a two point eight eight percent increase right now. More to come.
Any questions, anything eye-catching in there? So right now, it's, the bulk of the change is what you accounted for, for contractual expenses. Yes, I think, yes, if there are no other questions, we'll wait for the next copy. Which would be, what, what's gonna change from this one to the next one, then we get our department budgets and?
Um, the department budgets, I'll probably, I'll have them updated December to December, um, probably updated special ed numbers again, I will, I will apply the column movements for staff, any, any changes that the administration makes me aware of, I'm not sure when Paul typically turns in his facility budget, I know he's working on it, um.
It's usually after all the department wants.
Okay, so, maybe not much.
I was gonna say, by town meeting, you'll have a budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's early, but I, we like to start working on something at this point in time.
Yeah, super. Alright, uh, you have anything else for us?
I do not.
No, any other questions for Laura?
Good job.
Are you enjoying the meetings?
Enjoying?
That you're, that you inherited.
She loves me with all of them. Yes, yeah. Julie and I spend a lot of time together.
We do.
You seem, seem happy enough, so it must be, it's not that bad.
If there's nothing else, Laura, we may, we may ask if she's excused.
She's certainly to be excused, if there's no other questions, perfect.
Sure, and I apologize about the board practice, we'll get through this transition, so.
Right, okay.
Thanks for your patience.
Thank you, good night. Alright, I guess that brings us up to the principals' report. Turn it over to the principal.
Oh, I'll put it up, oh my goodness, I'm sorry. Okay. I just updated it, so, the photograph is the before and after that, maybe Laura was to. Look at that, no red. Lot of positive feedback about her red. Um, alright, so, we administered.
Do we still have, is there still time to change it if we don't like it?
I'd say probably not. Unless you wanna come back and sand.
I don't know, I really like it. Just checking.
Okay, so, on Wednesday, October tenth, we administered the PSAT to a hundred and ten of our students, um, the entire eleventh grade, um, and some seniors, uh, no charged student. And we were really happy to off, offer the opportunity, I saw many students really engaged in the test, who probably wouldn't have taken it otherwise, so I know that it was the right thing to do to offer that opportunity for kids. We have lots of ideas about how to make it better for next year, logistics and, uh, setting, those sorts of things.
Now, what's the percentage of eleventh graders, or is that?
We have a hundred and thirty eleventh graders, so, almost everybody took it.
Wow.
Yeah, which is great. Um, parent-teacher conferences, I, um, wrote this before we ended up canceling the Wednesday afternoon conferences. We had conferences last week, um, in the evening, and, uh, in the afternoon of the eighteenth. Felt like we had a pretty good turnout, the commons was, um, pretty busy, we had lots of conferences happening in the commons, but also a couple different things. The middle school interventionists were providing some of the score reports for the universal screeners that I mentioned earlier, so parents were able to get information about the skills that their students have in literacy and math. Um, I, it was a good turnout for parent conferences. Um, we've had a lot of professional development going on since the last time, uh, we were together, so we had uh, two sessions of science professional development, we've really targeted grades nine and ten with our professional development with science this year, uh, partially in response to the feedback we were getting from the community. Um, and we have really focused on specifically, uh, making sure that the content and instruction is rigorous, that it's engaging, and increasing the amount of student discourse, and making sure that students are really talking about what they're learning. There's a lot of research that student discourse is, um, very influential in student achievement. Our math department, um, is in its fifth year working with Teachers Development Group, which does, um, best practices in math instruction, uh, and we, again, we're focused on supporting our high school teachers, and they really worked on, um, really structured lesson planning, and then, uh, the coaches and I have been pushing into the classrooms and following up with observations of those, um, structured lessons that they've planned. Um, and I was in a classroom today, a geometry classroom today, and it was really exciting, I had a group of boys, I was sitting with a group of boys, and they were trying to find some unknown angles in, um, a figure, and there was algebra involved, and at one point, a student went like this, my mind is blown, and the other one was like, my brain hurts, but in a good way. It was a really, it was a good, it was, they were excited about completing the math, which doesn't always happen, so that was, that was encouraging. Um, we sent a team to the Roland Foundation Conference today, which was focused on equity in education. Um, and the afternoon sessions were facilitated by Vermont educators. Very highly thought of conference, um, lots of participation, were you there today?
No, I wasn't.
Okay, I wasn't sure. And then, I thought it would be interesting for you to see some of the recent field trips that have been happening, so I did a little update on field trips since the last time that we have been, um, we've been together, several field studies trips, resource management, had a really great event where they were, um, doing soil and land judging, uh, in Randolph.
Is that still going on?
That was, uh, a couple of last.
So that still goes on, that land judging?
Yeah, yeah, he had a, he had a good, good group of students that he took with him. Um, and actually, the FFA had their leadership camp in Brookfield, that, that we had students go overnight with Mark for that, so that was exciting as well. Um, we had our paying-for-college night, um, with a focus on filling out the FAFSA with support from VSAC, and that was on October eighth. And they, so they had a really good turnout. Uh, today, we hosted a local candidates debate here in the library, um, for state representative and for state senate. And, uh, Mr. Barney and Mr. Napolitano were the moderators for those debates, and their students were in the audience. Um, and we are continuing our school-wide focus on social-emotional learning, we're having monthly meetings where we are, uh, working in smaller groups that are a mixture of teachers from different content areas, talking about how to support students in challenging social situations, with challenging behaviors, and how to persevere. This month and next month, we're gonna be focusing on, uh, the importance of self-regulation, so we're gonna do a reading together tomorrow, and then next month, we're gonna focus on some concrete strategies to help students. Any questions?
Super, thank you very much. I guess that brings us up to the superintendent's report.
Hey, Dennis.
Yes, Richard.
I just looked down through this, I mean, it said, uh, we're gonna go back a full bit, I just looked at Jen, she just presented the, uh, principal's report. Uh, she needs to be listed administration as, as a principal of some sort. She, she just down there in the minutes is Jen Disorda. And, and, and I think a lot of people out there don't know her as a principal. I think you gotta write that down, because, because everybody seems to go to Palmer and Hartman, so, it, it'd be nice if you wrote her name down as a principal, so, they know she's, she's one of the three.
I'm not sure we can, though, can we, I mean, that's.
So, I'm, my license is a curriculum director's license, it's not a principal's license, but it is an administrator's license, so I think it's just a, a weird choice.
She's an administrator.
She's a school administrator here, for sure.
Okay, I, I, I always thought she was part of the three, and, and she was getting left state.
She is, certainly is, yeah.
Certainly is, but an instructional leader.
Oh, get, put, put whatever you gotta put.
Well-known.
Something special, right?
She's not just some random person who comes and presents things.
She's the person behind the curtain.
Okay, she put that.
Well, curriculum director it is. So, uh, for the superintendent's report, um, I haven't had a chance to look at much of it, um, and when I open it just now in this way, it moves all of the documents, so that's helpful. Uh, highlights, what I typically do now is I have at the SU meeting, I have the administrators from central office come and present some of the information. I can actually add to this a little bit, 'cause this is later in the month, so things have happened since then. But, we had a very good fall and beginning of the school year, MBU was really busy, as you know, with homecoming events and fireworks that happened in the wind, I don't understand how that happened, but they seem to go off here and then end up over there, but they were beautiful. We did, I did have, uh, in late September and just last week, two opportunities to meet with Dan French, the new secretary of education. On both times, he spoke to superintendents about his reorganization of the agency of ed. Uh, the first time, he had just, it had just come after he had terminated, um, Amy Fowler as one of the deputy secretaries, so that was a big surprise for many folks, but he really was speaking to, streamlining the chain of demand at the agency, and, uh, a real importance in identifying who is managing what project, who is in charge of what initiative, and making sure that people talk to one another, um, because the agency has become a little disparate, oh, uh, you know, if, they're sort of famous for not talking to one another about things that are coming through, and sometimes in the field here, we're the ones saying, excuse me, there is a conflict with what somebody just told me last week. So, he's very committed to that, he certainly also spoke about being more transparent and, and more authentic in their desire to get actual input from the field, and community input and feedback. Where I have certainly been invited to the agency of ed to be, uh, you know, from the field, get the input, but all they do is tell you what they're gonna do and ask you to sign off.
Don't get sucked into it.
Yeah, they never do that, right? So, I, I was pleased by that, I know that they are talking about moving to a new building, um, the, oh, National Life Building, and it'll, they'll all be on the same floor, so that would also help streamline communication. Um, so those were important. Last week, at the school board, um, meeting and superintendent meeting, um, the school board members went off and, and met, and Dan French came and met with superintendents for a little bit. It was right when they made the Act forty-six state board decision, so, we didn't ask him any questions about that at all, of course. Um, there was quite a bit of conversation about what that would look like, um, and he spoke about their process, he didn't speak about, you know, it wasn't the time to ask about particular decisions he made, or the decision about us, um, but, Um, but, he did, I did ask the question, um, because the Vermont Digger article um, spoke to the decision that the Mississauga Valley Union School District and the member districts would be merged. And it didn't say anything, it, I wanted clarification of, is that what they're calling their final decision? Or are they just making decisions in groups, and then there'll be a final report? Um, because there are um, lawsuits that local school districts are joining on that will potentially have an injunction and slow the process or stop the process. Um, and you don't know when those things start. And here we are talking about budgets, right? You know, we, we really wanna know what these things mean. So, that's where I got clarity from him, that the state board is making these decisions in these meetings provisionally. Sort of like a tentative agreement in negotiations. So, everybody knows that that's what their intent is, barring some huge thing. I don't know what it would be, um, but it won't be final until they vote on the whole package before November thirtieth. So, I was worried logistically for our school districts about what this, that decision meant. But, it is clearly the intent that they will make that merger. And um, yet, we do have, this is not in my written report, but we do have Franklin, Highgate, and Sheldon have all voted, uh, at least provisionally to join in the class action lawsuit that's out there. Swanton will be discussing it tomorrow. I don't know what they'll do, but they'll be discussing it. Um, and so, the, we don't know a lot about that lawsuit, but we do know that the intent is that it would be filed after the state board makes its final, final decision. And that the first part of that would be seeking an injunction to stop the merger activity. So, it's, we're kind of a bit in limbo. I, I'll probably talk to the SU board about, do we prepare certainly parallel? You know, following along with the lawsuit, and where are we with that? Um, I, you know, just take budgeting for example. We would start budgeting for a merged district this way anyway, taking the local districts and then putting it together. Um, and then in the end, the revenue perhaps looks a little different, or how you apply, but essentially, you take all your budgets and put them together. Uh, it's different when you're already merged in your budget, and you do that a lot differently. But, if we do have to merge in the end, and the lawsuit does not prevail, these local boards are not the ones who are passing the budget. It would be to um, a transition board that would have.
A new consolidated district.
Right. So, I think we've, we've gotta be pretty transparent about, you know, what all of our schools are planning. We have to be informing one another, um, and every time I know something, I'm gonna let you know. But, right now, still, I, I think everybody here guessed that the state board was gonna make that decision. We hoped that they wouldn't, but we did guess it. So, it's not a surprise, although I know it's disappointing. On that, I really, the only other.
Could I suggest that, um, for the negotiations purpose, that we invite Sheldon to, to, to send a representative to our meeting on the sixth, so that they're at least involved and aware, so that if things do get halted and we are negotiating a, a contract for, as it stands, the, the surprise reunion? That they wouldn't have to play catch-up and.
That's our intention, because if Sheldon has to go to Franklin Northeast and we merge, and we're two separate things, um, if Sheldon has to go to Franklin Northeast, they would bring the, their master agreement with them under statute as a starting place. So, it's, you know, it's, they have, both the board and the association of Sheldon have um, have real stake in this process too. So, I think it's very important to make sure that they're negotiating with us. The only other thing I wanted to point out is, in this report, we talk about the integrated field review. Um, as uh, Dan's smiling, Dan and I spent some time together in the St. Olmond City Library along with a number of our colleagues who are slated to be a part of this whole process. It's one of the ways the state uh, Agency of Ed is assessing the health of school districts. One is SBAH, and, and MEECAP science, and it's not MEECAP anymore, we've moved on. But, the other is uh, where teams of educators visit each other's schools and look at documents, and interview families, and interview teachers, and um, have a set of standards that we're looking at, how well schools are um, fulfilling the, the requirements of the education quality standard. So, we took a day to be trained, we were starting to look at documents, we got our assignments of where we were going to go, and we got uh, information on what we needed to plan for, for the visiting team that would have been here this week. And about two weeks ago, they canceled. So, we, um, they had some illness at the Agency of Ed, and uh, I just wanna, we are not sure whether they're going to postpone it to the spring. They say they're going to. We're hoping they don't, because we have a lot of Steve testing that happens at that time. It's not really a terrific time. Uh, that is something I'm gonna reach out to the leadership at A, Agency of Ed um, and, and advocate that if they're going to have us do it again, which is fine, next fall would be fine. Um, Koshia did a ton of work to prepare all the materials and gather them from Jen and, and all of uh, the schools. Dan, our teachers, they, they took a day out of their schools that, you know, they won't get back, uh, to be in a training. Um, and uh, they, they did a lot of good work together, so I appreciate their time. And I think it's unfortunate that um, it feels, it may feel to them that it was wasted. But, um, I, I, hopefully, either it will be next year, or they'll say we don't have to do them anymore. 'Cause that happens occasionally too. So, we'll, we'll see, um, and we'll keep you updated. But, it was something we were planning for, and, and we were updating you, but they, they canceled it. I felt bad for the schools that, um, we were beginning to plan. Some of the schools, it was like that next week, they were having teams, and it was too bad. So, that's it, I think. Mostly, I, I wanted to update you on that.
Yes, I was hoping we'd hear something about Act forty-six.
It's not great, I'm sorry.
Well.
When will Sheldon get his decision, do you know?
Well, I don't know that. They're taking things in chunks. So, they, at first, they had these guiding principles that they spent October second going through. And that was the lens through which they were gonna make some of these decisions.
Easy ones.
But, well, they actually imposed these criteria they were gonna judge that were more stringent than the law itself. So, they got some feedback on that, both um, from some anti-Act forty-six folks, and I think from their own council. Uh, and so, they withdrew that. And then they did start with some of the ones they see as easier. They certainly see MVU, because we're a union high school, and it's a union, does it, they see that as easy. We, of course, politically and in the community, do not see that as easy. But, you know, it's easy compared to South Hero that's sort of on its own, and where you put it. And from their perspective, though, that's the kind of thing they're looking at. So, Sheldon, you know, might be next time. They're adding extra meetings. Um, they're adding a meeting, I think, on Monday. Uh, and I think that they're adding to their November meetings too, so they'll have at least.
They've only got a month or so.
Right, they've gotta get it done by statute by the thirtieth of November. So, they've added two, maybe three meetings to get it done. My hope is Sheldon is, I don't think, in their range of the most. I, I mean, they have a plan, they talked about it. There were some school districts in the secretary's proposal where they really had no idea what to do, so, in that proposal. So, I think those will probably be the last to be decided, if they get to, I mean, I think they have to get to them all.
No, I saw online, they had a whole list of the ones that they had dealt with and were going to deal with, and I didn't see Alberg in that list.
Alberg, interestingly, now, Alberg had a seven oh six vote to be a part of the Grand Isle Supervisory Union in a three-by-one with Almont, North Hero, Grand Isle. So, they, as you know, uh, have um, petitioned the state, Alberg School, I guess, to change supervisory unions. That may be discussed as part of something. I had heard earlier from folks at the AOE that the state board would look at supervisory union reconfigurations only when Act forty-six pieces were done. They might talk about Grand Isle when they're looking at some of those smaller schools that they're not really sure where they would fit. You know, I, I couldn't, I'd hate to speculate on camera, because, you know, that would just be wild.
Right.
You know, but, I, I think that they, if they do it at all as part of Act forty-six, it would be one of the last things that they do. Probably they'll do it later.
Are we still budgeting buses to go to Alberg and to Sheldon for MVU?
As far as I know, Laura hasn't made any changes.
As far as you know, what?
Laura hasn't made any changes, like taking anything out.
Okay, so, still in the budget?
This preliminary budget, we didn't take away or add, only the things she talked about, just some multipliers that made sense.
Any other questions? All right, I see under new business, it doesn't look like there's anything listed as a whole.
No, we left it just in case.
There is anything for new business?
Yeah. Um, I think, uh, you know, we, we hear from a lot of people, but I, I, I think we need to hear an athletic report, or something from the athletic director. You know, a lot of things I think are going on, and I think it'd be nice to hear, hear from him, and um, you know, things that are, are coming up, and, and like the budget, you know. I, I'd like to talk more about that track. I'd like to see it home track meet here, two thousand twenty. That's my dream.
Perfect, we'll, we'll make note of that, and I'm sure John would love to, although he was a little damp, and I saw him earlier, so I probably, but I was anxious to get home tonight, but uh, I'm sure he would love to be back here in front of the board.
Thank you, Richard.
And, and Dennis, I don't know, I, I, well, we've talked about it before, but is there, is there any way to have an athletic committee, or is, you know, it only has been brought up before, and you know, just to know what's, what's going on, and uh.
I think you're more on the right track with having John come to the meetings. I think even if we scheduled him for, you know, a short report, maybe not every other month, but every three months, you know, quarterly, that type of thing.
Because I, I think, and another thing, Dennis, I think the winter season's coming up, and, and I think it's a long season. And I think it's a, emotions get risen, and, and, and I think it's a good time to have him doing the winter sports. I think, you know, it's just.
Yeah, but, but I think versus a committee, I think I'd rather see it, I'd rather see the whole board informed. We had committees, and I was on athletic committee for years, and uh, as, as much fun as it was, I don't miss it. And I think I'd rather have the whole board informed. So, I think all those, the work the committees were doing, I think if we could have it reported back to the board, I like that idea better. So, whether it happens or not, I know it's.
Let's get him here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we'll have any problem getting him here, and if we can get him here on a regular basis, at least after every season, during every season, so we can get a report of each season, I think that'd be great.
I'll extend an invitation to him. Is there something in particular you want him to come prepared with? I, I hate to have him just kinda show up not knowing what to expect from, from you guys. I think if there is, let us know, or.
You know, I, I, the, the track's a topic, you know, that's, you know, although, like I said, I'd like to see him meet there by two thousand twenty, you know. And, and, and I think the pro, I, the biggest problem there is, I think we don't, we gotta get with somebody and keep going with that guy Jay. You know, it'd even be nice sometime to bring him in, the guy that did the track this, you know, s- so we can get an idea. You know, he, he, I was under the impression that he did U thirty-two, and he, from what I talked to him, he did U thirty-two. So, he, he's got a numbers game, and, you know, because I, I think we need to have something a little bit bigger set for, for February, s- so we can get that done. You know, that's one of the topics, and you know, and.
There's anything else, by all means, let us know, and certainly, or reach out to John, just let him know, but.
Yeah.
I'll extend the invitation.
We'll do a quick recap of the, you know, how the fall sports will be done by our next meeting, and maybe a recap of the seasons, and um, I see like, for example, football, they, they had some uh, injury issues, and you know, and but had to keep, 'cause I'm sure people in the community are gonna be wondering if, if they're not a part of the, of the team, they're gonna, 'cause they read it in the paper, just like I did, and it's like, well, what's going on, you know, why are they getting, why are they out? You know, so it'd be good to, to hear that information.
Yeah, and is, is it, is it something that's just temporary, or is it something that's gonna be long-term, or, you know? What do you, you know, wh- what the, how does the state, you know, if we miss so many seasons, it, it, do the state, does the state say you're all done, or, you know, I, I don't know.
That'll be, yeah, John will have all the answers. Thank you, Richard. Anything else under new business while we're here, and it's still early?
I'm gonna look at the gym.
Yeah.
So, the, the, the SU board meeting, November third, is it done, Saturday?
It is a Saturday.
That's, I think this is my draft, rather than the one that was sent in the packet. Your one says November third on it, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's a one on the packet, too.
It's probably the first Wednesday of, of November.
Yeah, it's the seventh.
Oh, seven. I was just about to announce that date, I'm glad I didn't just read it.
It's Wednesday the sixth, then we have negotiations on the sixth. Um, and then a, a strategy, not negotiations. Um, and the seventh is a Wednesday, and that's, um, yep, that's my mistake.
Okay, so Franklin.
Correct, usually catches me. I think October third is the.
Franklin Northwest will be November seventh, six-thirty in Franklin.
It will.
And then our next MVU meeting will be here on the fifteenth. At seven, fifteenth, that, uh, that'll be Thursday, back on regular schedule.
Yep.
And at this point, I think, I think we probably should make the motion before we recess.
Yes.
We're gonna go into executive session, and then we are gonna go for a psych visit of the gym. So, our two issues are a side letter with the association we're gonna discuss, and then a uh, a land-related issue that we're gonna discuss in executive session. Is there any other issues? Okay.
I'll make that motion.
So, motion by Richard, and I think we're going to invite in um, Julie. And I'm not sure that we need all the administrators, uh, I'm not sure, I mean, we do need, are there any suggestions on that? I mean, we need for administrators?
I don't, I mean, I think we can, uh, to the, um, the land piece.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um.
In the side letter here.
Side letter, I've got it.
So, we might now need the principal. So, we just need to invite in.
Okay.
Julie, okay.
I got it.
And so, the motion, I'm sorry, the motion was made by Richard.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mark, it's enter executive session for those issues, invite Julie. Uh, all in favor of that motion, saying, by my saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Nice habit, enter executive session. I think I have one more comment I wanted to make, even though I should have done it before that motion. I noticed all these pumpkins around the table, am I, like, assuming that they might be gyms?
I think the great pumpkin.
I was gonna ask you.
So, I, I do appreciate. So, I, I do appreciate...
These are, I'm hoping, you guys can take them, so I don't have to carry them. There they are.
Thank you so much.
They're beautiful.
Take them. And I wanted to have a little festive for the month, and I appreciate all the work you guys do, and that's my appreciation, and please, just help yourselves and take the pumpkins.
Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
We appreciate you. Goodness gracious.